Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the singing of Oh Canada.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true Lord strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you, everyone. In light of this past week's events, I do have a statement with regard to the tragic house fire in Pubblico. On behalf of the citizens of the town of Yarmouth, we extend our sincere condolences to the family members and to the greater community on this tragic event. Words cannot express our deep sadness. We also recognize the tremendously difficult work carried out by local volunteers, including fire departments and emergency organizations. Our fire chief has ensured fire resources are available if needed as first responders go through this critical incident debriefing. Many continue to ask how they might assist. The municipality of Argyle has set up accounts and trusts at both the Credit Union and the Royal Bank of Canada under the name Pubblico Fire Relief Fund. Donations can be made at those locations and the municipality of Argyle will ensure the funds are administered appropriately. There are a number of other fundraisers underway as the community pulls together and we encourage everyone to support those as we can. Please know that our thoughts and prayers are with all involved. If we could now just have a moment of silence. Thanks, everyone. So to our business for this evening, Linda, the record of attendance. And we do have, Councilor Hood did say he wouldn't be here. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone?
I'd just like to mention it to Councilor Hood.
Hang on one second, CAO, would you? It's only after my sixth year that I get it right.
I used to keep pressing until it stopped.
Okay, go ahead, counselor.
Thank you, your worship. I talked to Councilor Hood last night and he sends his regrets. He's had an appointment that was actually booked before he was elected. So this appointment's been in the works for over a year or so. He's very sorry that he couldn't make it tonight and there was a situation that he couldn't get on.
Thank you. Approval of agenda, additions or deletions? So I'll start with, we are removing 7A, which is the Southwest Nova Biosphere. Excuse me. And we are adding 12A, Deer Problem in the Town of Yarmouth. That's Counselor Cleveland's. I'm going to do the 100 Meal Update. We'll put that as 12B. And I do have a question on, I'm going to put inferior housing. Does anybody have anything else they wish to add or delete?
Prove the agenda with the additions and the deletions.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor and Counselor Barry, thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of minutes, Town Council, April 20th, 2017, amended.
So moved, your worship?
Okay, moved and seconded. Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Town Council, February 17th, 2017.
So moved, seconded?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Town Council, December 14th, 2017.
So moved, seconded?
Moved and seconded. Questions being called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And Town Council Special, December 14th, 2017. Moved and, I'm glad to hear I'm this side moving. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. It's the special, okay. Presentations, Western REN regarding the Atlantic Immigration Pilot. Welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it, councilors. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm here to talk to you.
Nope, just right into the microphone. Yep, just tip it up and speak as closely into, that's great. You're on, welcome, you're on East Link TV. We don't want folks to miss what you're saying. Thank you.
No, because it's, uh... All right. The Western Regional Immigration Project, specifically Michael REN, which is the event immigration pilot. The news a little bit in the last few weeks. Just a quick interruption, the Nova Scotia Regional Immigration Network model leads regional economic development in progress. The RENs are business-led and business-facing organizations with focus on leadership, regional strategies, relationship, business community, information, knowledge, business climate, partnerships, and municipal collaboration. There are many pathways through immigration and the Atlantic Immigration Pilot is just one of those pathways. That's why I put this slide up, to show that there's quite a few different pathways. I concentrate on the Atlantic Immigration Pilot, but as we work with companies or people, sometimes other pathways make more sense. So just to give you an idea. The Atlantic Immigration Pilot itself is designed to address the unique labor market challenges of Atlantic Canada. It was developed by the federal government with the assistance of provincial governments. It actually doubled the amount of immigrants who were in Canada to about 2,000 immigrants who were in Canada, 800 were allocated for 2017 to Nova Scotia. This is a golden opportunity for us to demonstrate the need to increase this allocation because we do need more immigrants coming in. These are the numbers for our population. This is the population from the Western Nova Scotia population, which is what the REN covers from there and to there. So there's about 42,000 people. Under 20, it's about, almost 8,000 people under 20 years old, which makes just under 20% of the population. 20 to 44, we're going to 10,300 people, so about 24% of the population. 45 to 64, it's about 32% of the population that are almost working. And 65 and older, 25% of our population is there. So our workforce is getting older as we go, which is part of the plan, right? The Atlantic Immigration Pilot is an opportunity for businesses to fill their labor gaps because of many factors. Aging population is one, but it's not the only factor. There's many factors that are contributing to this. There's, within the Atlantic Immigration Pilot, there's actually three different pathways. Intermediate skill, which is unique to this program. High skill, this program works, but there's also different pathways for high skilled people. And international graduate program, but there's also other pathways for international graduates. The intermediate skill is where this program is very different. The key benefits of this program is the federal government will actually fast track the process and so it's a faster process, plus the people coming in can get an interim work permit so they can actually be here quicker to help those labor needs. They're able to skip the labor market impact assessment, which is a huge thing to miss. International graduates can be hired right out of school and this is a permanent labor force solution. It's enough with temporary workers, this is for full-time jobs, right? What's good for businesses? The Atlantic Immigration Pilot is unique in its business length, meaning the employer is in charge when you point into the... And it applies a greater range of people, of jobs. Also, a lowered language benchmark for this program to CLB4, which is the Canadian standard for testing language. It used to be CLB5, they still have to get to CLB5, but they can come in as 4. How would we start? Well, the first step is to apply to be designated as a designated company. After that, they connect to a settlement service organization. Because it's not only to bring the people, once they're here, we want them to stay. So the settlement piece is super important. And once, that's why we can get the companies to contact the settlement services provider to have a good relationship. Once that's done, then they can apply to have their job offer endorsed by the province. Then they go through the travel program and get processed and then they can come. These are the numbers as of December 1st. I do have the updated numbers because I received them after I set up the slide. On the slide it says 341 employers have applied for the designation. 225 were designated, 242 endorsed, 174 endorsements, endorsement applications were approved. Now, new numbers, 369 employers have been designated, 276 employers have applied, 276 have been designated, 267 endorsement applications under the C, and 198 have been approved. That was as of last week. So the ball is moving in the right direction. It's a big opportunity for our region and what we ask of you is to tell employers, tell your senior management, friends, tell your elected leaders, tell themselves. And repeat, repeat, repeat. Oh, I'm not close enough. I tried to make this as short and sweet as possible. So does anybody have any questions?
Go ahead, deputy.
Good presentation. How do you work with the university system? I know that we have a lot of exchange of foreign students coming to St. Anne's and I know in St. Mary's where you see a lot of people from out of the country. How do you work with the, in the university system? And you see more and more actually in the community college system too.
Yes, well, we work with the employers themselves, right? So, I work with employers to get them designated so they can be able to bring these people in. If they're already here as an international graduate, the pathway is there through the Atlantic Immigration Pilot and it's actually quicker than the traditional pathway for an international student. It allows them to come in without having job experience, which the other programs don't. So straight out of school, we don't want them to go back to their country, right? That's the idea, so they can stay here and start working for a company that made them a job offer and continue to stay here.
Have you worked with any municipal units that have taken advantage of the program?
Not yet.
Oh, okay. You hear that, Jeff? Okay, good.
No, it's a very good program, it's very well-built and it's focused on the employer. So once you're designated as an employer, if the situation changes and you find somebody local, super, you don't need to continue to the next step, right? So it's very employer-based, which is...
Good stuff. Go ahead, counselor.
When I was reading the information prior to the meeting, the success to December 1st, just ask a question, is that just for the Western Region? The number of employers have applied for designations, 341, you updated?
These are provincial numbers.
These are provincial numbers, okay. I was wondering about that. Is there, if... I guess I'm interested in, are there, is there a way to measure a success story? You have 174 endorsement applications approved. It's not our business to find out who might be successful? It's just that we take your presentation?
Honestly, at this point, it's, there are some immigrants that have come in, okay? But at this point, the list of designated employers is confidential. So we try not to go too far in that conversation.
That's fine. No, I was just curious, you know, it's, there has to be a way to celebrate that. And information like this is great, but how many people, how many applications, you know?
I think it's important for me to mention that these approved endorsement applications is for the primary applicants, okay? And this program is made for the family. So even if it's one endorsement, this might be three, four, six people that are actually coming in. Because it's made for the husband, the wife, the kids, the whole family.
I'm just trying to find a way to help blow your horn better.
Just keep buying peace by chocolate.
I know, it's just because of the confidentiality, because we don't want to put a list out there of companies that are designated that'd be overwhelmed with applicants.
Yeah.
Right? Right now, those names are confidential, so...
And that's fine, and thank you very much. It's a good presentation and good information, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Counselor Cleveland?
Before we start getting that small segment of the population hollering about how immigrants are stealing my job, maybe we should point out that there are, there really is in this area and I think it's something that needs to be emphasized a lot around here. There's a labor shortage here. We are in need of people to do work.
Yes. There are quite a few employers that are, and this is right across the province, actually right across Atlantic Canada. There's actually quite a bit of employers that are having issues filling their jobs. Not because people don't want to, it's just that they can't find the qualified, either the qualified labor or the people that actually want to do the job.
Right.
So this is a great opportunity and this is why with the Atlantic Immigration Pilot, being, opening up to the intermediate skill set, because all the other pathways, it all works with the knock codes. I don't know if you're familiar with the National Occupancy Codes, which basically identifies the jobs for the federal government for the job classification. So this program, there was no pathway for a knock code under a B. So if you were a knock code zero or an A, you could come in quite, I won't say quite simply, but you had the pathway to come in. With this program, we can actually take people that are knock Cs, which are the, trying to think of an oxie that I can just click. A lot of our labors, like plumbers, like cooks, like, those are mostly knock Cs.
Trades.
Trades. But there are some As and Bs in there too.
Okay.
This does not apply to a general laborer.
Okay.
Okay? So there's no pathways for just a general labor.
You have to have a skill of some kind.
You have to have a skill and experience in that field to be able to come in.
How do you designate that? And I suppose that's kind of a broad question, but if, how do you know that they're skilled? Is it, do they have to have a certain degree?
Yes, yes. Everything is, when they do the application for endor, excuse me. When they're at the stage of doing the application for endorsement, part of it is to have their skill set verified, their education verified. So they have to meet up with Canadian standards of education and of skills. So there is some checks and balances in place and yes, the labor market impact assessment is taken out, but the companies still have to prove that they've advertised locally, provincially, nationally for the job for a certain period of time before they're able to move to the next step.
Right, okay. And just one, and I know we've already touched on this a bit, but 174 endorsement applications approved. Are there actually people in the province now because of this? That's the question.
There are some coming in, yeah.
Okay. Ongoing process, I'm assuming?
Yes, it's an ongoing process. It's a, immigration is a very complex issue.
Yes.
Okay? Therefore, coming into a country is, it takes time. So these, this process is accelerated, it's a lot quicker than all the other pathways, but it still does take time.
Let's talk about time, just, and then I'll be done. How long? What, when you're, from, from one guy putting an application in or one lady putting an application in who wants to come, who you manage to match up?
The AIP is built for the employers.
Okay.
So let's look at it from the employer's standpoint. The employer, once the application is complete and sent to NSOI, the Office of Immigration, it usually takes about two weeks for them to be designated. That means that they can recruit internationally. Once they find a candidate, you have to make a job offer to that candidate and then apply for endorsement. Once the office, so that period of time is a question mark, right? So once the Office of Immigration gets the completed application with the job offer, it usually takes about two weeks for that endorsement to be approved.
Wow.
It's very quick.
That is.
I mean, they're doing an awesome job at the Office of Immigration to get these streamlined. Once that's approved, then it gets transferred to the federal government. Now, because you're in a different country, there's language testing, there's a bunch of things that they have to do. It can take, what they've been telling us, it's about 90 days, okay? And then the person's on their way, so...
Really not that bad.
Yeah, that's not bad at all.
No, it's very accelerated. And then it's also accelerated for them to get their permanent residency. So everything is moved a little quicker through this program because of the checks that are in place from the province and then from the feds, of course. But, yeah, so it's a very, very well-thought-of program.
Thank you, Gina.
You're welcome.
Counselor Barry?
My question is related to the language benchmark, which is a CLB4.
Yes.
What's the obligation and what's the timeframe they would have to move to a, your minimum standard that used to be a CLB5?
They have, I think it's 300 days to get them up to the CLB5.
That's quick, I mean, that's good.
Okay, so it gives enough time for, because that would be part of the settlement plan, okay, that they need language training. So the company or the individual, there are programs out there in the region and in every region across the province that have programs to help people get to that level. So, and honestly, a CLB5 is for, it's not a high, it's not a very high level. CLB5, you're basically, it's able to comprehend yourself in business, right? You'll be able to communicate with the person. So a lot of the people coming in are much higher than the CLB5.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dennis?
Thank you. I was just wondering, once the individual is processed and is allowed to come, how long does it take before their family can come with them?
And they can come with them, initially, yeah. It's...
So the family doesn't have to have a job offer or anything?
The primary individual, that's what they base it on. So that primary individual should be able to support their families coming here, right? Now, that's an opportunity for us, because then you're not getting only one person, you're getting ideally a few people. So that's more jobs, more people in our schools, more people buying food, buying goods in our shops, right? So it's good all around.
So, once they're here, about how long does it take for them to get Canadian citizenship?
The citizenship itself is one thing, but they can get their permanent residency. Right now, they're telling us it takes about six months, which is
Pretty good.
Very fast.
Very, yes.
Considering the other pathways are around 18 to 24 months. So it, they accelerated everything with this program, which is very good.
So does this go for students as well?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
And students are actually a little bit quicker because they're already here, right?
That's right.
They skip a lot of the process. Yep. And they have, they have, honestly, they have one year. As long as they find a job within that first year out of university, they qualify for this.
Good, thank you, very much.
You're very much welcome.
We love our immigrants. Okay, business arising. Request for decision strategic priorities. CAO?
So, your worship, council met with senior staff in December in a workshop to review status of the strategic priorities we set in January 2017. And we updated our strategic priority chart, which is the third page of the request for decision. And so the intent would be that council would approve this chart this evening and then staff will go to work and report on a monthly basis on the progress made on the various projects. Within the chart, there are timelines and staff person's responsible for each of the priorities. And as we, as we complete the work or as we run into unexpected obstacles or as we need resources, we will come back to council and request assistance or support or direction. And as we complete things, we will ask or suggest and request your direction on which of the, of the next items, the items that are sort of below the line, do we advance up into the current priority list? And so this will be on our website. It obviously is with our council agenda tonight, but if it's approved, it will be on our website under Council Priorities section where the public can see it and monitor progress as well. as well.
Go ahead.
I'm prepared to make a motion that we adopt the strategies, the strategy, strategic priorities that we adopted in, or agreed upon in December two thousand seventeen.
Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Yep. Good. Okay. Um, good. And so they will be on the website, and, uh, keeping in mind that things can always change. Just in case something crazy happens.
Right. And so it, it is intended to be a, a living document. This is, this is, uh, uh, version one, and it will change as, as, uh, as circumstances and direction from Council changes and as we complete work. So, uh, you know, something unexpected could happen that could cause Council to meet at Committee of the Whole and, and give direction that something be shifted on this chart. Uh, something gets completed, we, we cross it off, we celebrate, and we, and we suggest what, what goes next. And, uh, it may not necessarily be the next thing that's b- below the line, uh, depending on the circumstances and, uh, and Council's wish.
And we can do more than one thing at once.
We can do, as you can see in the chart, uh, we can see, we can, we can do many things at once.
Yeah. Sometimes people ask, why, why are you doing this? Why don't you focus on B instead of A? But we can do A, B, and C all at the same time. So, uh, everything's on our radar. Go ahead, CAO.
So, and just, just to that point, uh, Your Worship, all of this is above and beyond our normal operations and services. This is, this is kind of above and beyond stuff, right? So we're still, uh, plowing and salting the streets, we're still fixing potholes, we're, you know, we're still fighting fires, uh, doing planning and development and, uh, and so on. Uh, this is kind of those, those additional projects that, uh, that Council is directing and staff are recommending.
Good. Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. New business, tourism investment allocation, request for support. CAO?
Uh, Your Worship, uh, your General Manager of YASTA, sorry, before I speak on this, does somebody, somebody on the YASTA board wish to speak to this?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yep, sure.
Um, this is a, this is a letter that Neil is sending and that he's hoping that we will support. Uh, the idea is, is that we were very happy as a group, YASTA was as a group, that, uh, the Province of Nova Scotia is committed to growing tourism, which is, uh, a very important part of our economy, and here in Yarmouth is a key part of our economy certainly. And, uh, we were very excited to see that, uh, they had pledged, uh, an extra investment of about eight million dollars in tourism infrastructure. And what they called it was iconic tourism sites in the province. So we were very excited about this. And then, when we saw the list, uh, we found that apparently Peggy's Cove is very iconic, but Cape Forchue is not, and that there is really no money going in this particular area. And so this is a, a letter to, uh, the Honorable Minister McClellan, uh, just reminding him that we're here and that, uh, we feel that, uh, not only is Yarmouth a key part of the, uh, the puzzle when it comes to, uh, tourism provincially, but that we have our own iconic, uh, tourism sites that we could certainly benefit with that money. And so that's what this letter is.
Thank you. Go ahead, Deputy.
I'll make a motion that we support the request from YASTA, and also maybe if we could CC the local MLAs in there, I think probably, um, Emily Donchmont, maybe Churchill, and, uh, Gordon Wilson.
Good.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Request for decision, Connect Nova Scotia. Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, Worship. Uh, this proposal comes from a group that I think is, is, uh, rather innovative and thinking outside the box. They're, they're kind of, uh, uh, trying to, to promote, um, active transportation around the province and the Blue Route. And, uh, I think they're trying to get a, uh, initiative off the ground. They've identified Yarmouth as a, as a key location. Um, and so I've, I've read the proposal, they're looking for somebody to support their work, uh, this year, and including Yarmouth as, as an event location. But I would, I'd suggest, as, as the request for decision, uh, says, I'd suggest we refer this to the Recreation Director for him to investigate whether there's a joint opportunity here with the District of Yarmouth, uh, perhaps coordinated through his department, and, uh, whether or not, uh, he and, he sees value for money in their proposal. Uh, I think it warrants a little bit more investigation, but if we asked him to report back in two weeks at Committee of the Whole, uh, that should be ample time to get a sense of, of the reasonableness of the request.
Good.
Make a motion, we send it to the Leisure Service Director.
Second.
And report back to Committee of the Whole. Okay. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Question.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. We Care Radio-Thon, Deputy.
Thank you, Your Worship. I make a motion, the Town of Yarmouth grant one thousand dollars to the Yarmouth Hospital Foundation for the We Care Radio-Thon.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question, Your Worship.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And we can talk about, I'm gonna go up and speak, and I assume you are too, Deputy.
Yeah.
One of us bring that check when we go, or if we can send it out. Emergency management bylaw. Go ahead, CAO.
Uh, Your Worship, this really is about, uh, seeking direction. Uh, we, uh, we operate an emergency management office, uh, between the Town and District of Yarmouth, and Argyle operates their own separately. And at different times in the past, over the time I've been here, uh, we've had, I'll say informal conversations and whatnot about, about joining the two. And that kind of makes a bit of sense, and certainly the, the storms over the last couple of weeks have kind of brought that thought back to my mind. Um, you know, when you think about, um, sending messages to the community through our local media, which tends to cover both areas, uh, when you, when you think about, people don't often trip over municipal lines in their day-to-day business, and so they might forget that if they're in Argyle, you know, it's one thing, but when they're in the District of Yarmouth, it's something else, and in the Town, maybe something again. So, maybe it's time that we, uh, that we look at, uh, whether it makes sense to have one emergency management organization for the entire county. So, I guess what I'm asking is if you, if you like the sound of that, if you'd like staff to, to, uh, investigate that, what I'm suggesting as a first step is the, uh, the CAOs, three CAOs, uh, meet and, and discuss it and report back to our respective Councils, because, just because I get a mandate to discuss it here, doesn't mean that they have a mandate, right? So, allow us to initially meet and, uh, and see if, if we think that the idea might have legs, seek a, seek a joint mandate, and perhaps, uh, do a bit of a, a review and, and see if, see that, how that might work in a way that we could all, we could all benefit.
Good. Go ahead there, Counselor.
Are you looking for a motion, Jeff?
So the, the motion would basically be to direct staff to, um, to seek information on regional structure for EMO with colleagues?
Or to discuss it? Just to discuss the possi-?
To begin.
To begin discussions, yeah. I'll move that motion, Your Worship.
Second.
Good. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. You're welcome. Reports, Council Advisory Committees. Do we have anything there? Citizen advisory? We didn't, did we? Okay, so reports for information, the Communities in Bloom report is there. Any, do you have anything on that, Counselor Cleveland, that you want to share? I know you're looking for volunteers.
Yeah, I'm looking for volunteers. And what I, as much as anything, I want to share my, uh, excitement of the fact that we had a meeting, uh, on Monday afternoon at five o'clock. We were planning on this, but it was kind of a, the idea is, of course, that this, this symposium, the Communities in Bloom Symposium, the national symposium that we're hosting, uh, is in twenty nineteen, so it's a year and a half away. There's, there's a distance there. But we want to get everything in place. We want to put our best foot forward, of course. Uh, we're, by the time the actual symposium happens, we'll probably need about sixty volunteers to do different things. But we were looking for a basic structure. I have to be honest with you. We did the call for volunteers, and I expected it would be me and three other people or something like that. You know, it's, it's early.
This is Yarmouth.
This is Yarmouth. I started getting email messages of people who couldn't attend, uh, probably Saturday night going through Sunday, and I probably got six or seven of those. When we got to the meeting, there was more than twenty people there, and since the meeting, there's easily been another seven or eight people who have messaged me saying they couldn't attend, but can't wait. So I just have to say to the Town, and I, it shouldn't surprise me, but I am very excited with the enthusiasm that I'm seeing. It's, it's, it's really heartwarming. It's, we are going to be the smallest town ever to host this symposium, and I know we're going to blow this thing out of the water, because that's what we do. And so, uh, it's kind of exciting.
So, so I think what, what folks will grow to understand as the date comes near, we're inviting the entire world...
Yes, we are.
... to Yarmouth.
It's a national symposium, and we'll get a lot of national people, but we'll get plenty of international delegates who are come, they will come with their spouses. Uh, of course, because of our location, there's Americas in Bloom just across the ferry. And, uh, so we're going to be doing a push, we're going to be speaking with Bay Fairies about, uh, setting something up with them as well. We're expecting a lot, and I think it's going to go extremely well. I'm very, very optimistic. I have to be honest, I'm excited. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, congratulations. That's great. Okay. Mayor's report, and I do have one this evening, I haven't had one for a while, but I have to say this be- before I start. A, a gentleman came into Town Hall yesterday, late, and gave me a copy of a, not, the first edition of the Lighton Herald in nineteen sixty-two. And on the front page, um, was the announcement of the new mayor, brand-new mayor, who was Fred Eamon fifty-five years ago. And I can say that fifty-five years later from this seat, and it's pretty humbling to be able to say that. I do have a Mayor's New Year's message, and I did share it with the Vanguard. Thank you, Tina, for, for doing that. "We've arrived at two thousand and eighteen, and with each day, the honor of serving this community grows deeper. We've come so far together, and it's exciting to walk into two thousand and eighteen with you, knowing we're always on the right track." Well, not always, but we try to get it right for the most part. "As the economic center of the region, the strength of the Town of Yarmouth is tremendously important to the future growth of this entire area. I'm often asked what stands out most about the previous year. Without hesitation for two thousand and seventeen, it's not only a statement I heard repeatedly, but a goal we desperately needed to accomplish. The Town feels different, if you just ponder on that for a second. The first time I heard those words, I'll be honest, it brought me right to my knees, thankful that it's all coming together. We can all agree, we look different. That's the easy part. Facades, bumpouts, greenery, paving, signage, vibrant colors, and more. But when these factors change the feel of a Town, the positive implications are huge. The feel instills the pride and draws people and businesses here, in turn creating much-needed jobs, adding to the tax base, and creating critical mass so others will follow suit. In a word, all those small steps created growth. None of this happened by accident, none of it, nor did it happen overnight. The previous Council took an amazing, transforming plan off the shelf, dusted it off, and we've been implementing the heck out of it for the last four years. It takes guts, patience, and vision to work a plan and to stick with it. We've hit our stride and need to stay the course. Think back only four short years ago, and you can't help but see the difference. Our once-nearly-dead downtown is now a living piece of real estate that invites all to come, sit, shop, stay a while, and enjoy. The changes have encouraged businesses to open, with more in the planning stages. It's an experience, a destination, and it'll only get better. What's been done so far is, you recall, what we were all hungering for just a few short years ago. We know there's much, much more to do, and if these small changes have made us such a big difference, imagine what happens when we had the guts to take on the bigger pieces of the plan. Not easy. But if we don't, if we stop now, we'll never be all we can be. Some have suggested we put a stop to any big plans, because we're just small-town Yarmouth. Frankly, that's just the way it'll be forever if we don't continue to take on the big-ticket items together with the smaller initiatives. Most of you understand, we aren't just anything. We're a world-class Town with the ability to see, be seen globally when we focus on what we can be and execute that plan. We have residents from all over the world that have chosen Yarmouth because they see the value here. They start businesses, they build families, they become a part of us. To you, I say thank you for choosing Yarmouth. We've got a lot more in store. There's been opposition to every step forward, and just as it should be. We need to be thankful that we live in a democracy where our voices can all be heard. And frankly, while the outright abuse that some folks think is okay is neither acceptable nor welcome, we absolutely encourage and seek different opinions in a respectful manner to the, and, and challenges to any decisions that we make. Each voice is important. While there is not a Council member in existence that I can ever think of that doesn't wish to give everyone everything they want, I respectfully submit, the wants are not our job. I wish they were. Our job is to give the entire community not what it wants, but what it needs to survive and thrive. And when the wants and needs are the same, beautiful things happen, that's for sure. Our job is to give the entire community what it needs. Those are the most difficult decisions we as a Council make, and while, while we may not agree, everyone, our decisions are based on what's best for the Town and indeed the region. My door and the door of all your Council members have always been open, and they continue to be open, to those who want to have those respectful discussions on any community-related topic. Stop by, I'll even make the coffee. Council's priorities for two thousand and eighteen, we discussed earlier this evening, and there's quite a number of them. We've already begun. By the end of February, we will have a conceptual plan for waterfront development. By early spring, we will see a business case for the arts and culture facility. We will work with the YMCA on building an agreement with them and other partners, as we currently fund them without an agreement in place. From there, we can begin to discuss possibilities of a new aquatic center, just think we all agree we need. And of course, we'll continue to work with the Curling Club on upgrades needed there, and there are so many other things that are on the list. Although many issues facing our region fall under provincial jurisdiction, including housing, community services, and more, that the towns and municipalities, it's not our mandate to deal with the social issues, but sadly, we are the ones that are face-to-face on the sidewalks with these folks, but that's the way the system is. But the Town does continue to work with the Province to find solutions and do all we can on a local level. Next steps include a long-term capital plan for our priorities, development of a comprehensive downtown parking plan, taking a look at future plans for the Mariner Center, and working on an accessibility plan and cannabis bylaws. Regardless of what's on the list, I assure you, this Council is committed to continuing the work of revitalization and make things better for every citizen. We know the winter months are more difficult for some than others, and especially, um, you know, the colder it gets, and we've had some cold snaps lately. To this end, you know, we're doing what we can. One thing is that, is that the Mayor's Task Force, uh, put together the Hundred Meals Initiative. Seniors are enjoying meals and conversations. I've seen entire families come and watch children dance after the meal. It's really, really cool. There's live music at some. Everyone's on the same playing field, and it's absolutely wonderful. It's for the entire community, and we hope many of you will come out. For the record, uh, we see as many people from the County as we do from the Town, and that's great. We, and we love that it's absolutely free, every meal, and I'll do an update, um, on that in a moment. For those in need, it's perfect, as it provides a hot meal a day. The fuel bank runs all winter, the food bank is there serving the community. The Salvation Army and other churches and organizations are doing everything they can every day to make sure our citizens are safe and that they have what they need. And I do want to mention one more thing. CAO, you're gonna have to help me with the title of this one, 'cause I forget. If, if you're living in rental conditions that, that you feel, um, are inappropriate, there are measures that we can take. So you can call Town Hall, and it is Glenn.
Glenn, uh, Buildings?
Yep. Go ahead.
So, Glenn Muse, the Building Inspector.
So, uh, Glenn Muse, the Building Inspector, uh, he, he has the minimum housing standards bylaw and he can, he can assist people who, who may find themselves in a situation where, uh, their housing, uh, is not being maintained to, to a minimum standard.
Okay, thank you. That's exactly what I was asking, I just, I couldn't remember the words, but it is the minimum housing standard and some folks have contacted me and I'm sure council members have heard from folks as well where, you know, people's windows aren't shutting or their, you know, things like that, their pipes are freezing, so you can call Town Hall and we can direct you that way. It's important everyone have a safe place to live. As I close the New Year's message, I'm reminded of the All Hands on Deck Initiative that together we embraced a few years ago and that we inherently knew would bring positive changes. So, many of you have shared the excitement over the changes thus far. We're here in a different Yarmouth today because you rolled up your sleeves and you gave it your all. As we go forward, there's no room for complacency and I humbly say to you that this continued journey to being the best we can be is a covenant between you, your mayor, and your council. We are our absolute best when we are in it together. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. And so, from us to you, Happy New Year and hang on, folks, because we're in for quite a ride this year. You're welcome. Okay. Questions for committee chairs. Anything? Wade covered Communities in Bloom, nothing new coming up there? Okay, additions? Alrighty. Deer problem, that's you, councillor Cleveland.
Thank you, your worship. Um, this is something that's, it comes up occasionally and I know it has come up before, uh, before I was a councillor certainly. Um, it, it was mentioned to me by a couple of citizens, coincidentally within a few weeks of each other and it was, uh, it was before Christmas break that it happened. Uh, and mo- both of them, I should point out, are, uh, probably in the Elm Street area, so that's where that particular issue was. And, and it was asked if I would bring it up in council, so I'm doing it again. Um, the deer can be a nuisance. I don't know how many there are, I know there are plenty around, um, but it's, of course, completely anecdotal. I live on the, I guess you'd call it the south end of town and-
There's three tonight coming here.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's, there's a few that-
They cut through my yard.
Yeah, I see, I see, uh, I see tracks, I see tracks on my, my lawn when I'm walking the dog and the dog is sniffing like mad. Uh, we've, we've seen the pictures on Facebook of the family that we're crossing on Stars Road and that's where the issue comes. What I was getting, the complaints I was getting was that they were becoming nuisances as far as, uh, the, uh, in the summertime, they were eating the gardens. They were literally, uh, one gentleman mentioned that they were literally coming up to his front door and eating the plants out of his planter. And I know, we all say that's really cute, but it's also, A, it's a huge nuisance, but B, it's a safety issue.
It's dangerous.
Uh, it, it is dangerous, you have to keep your eyes out, um, and, uh, it can result in some serious things, so. I, I, I don't know what I'm asking for particularly, as much as I'd like to make a motion, perhaps that staff could take a look and see if there's anything we could do.
So, do you want me to help you?
Certainly.
And, and I don't know how much help it'll be. Um, I think it's, uh, Natural Resources that this file would go through. I know that we are not alone. I know that, uh, Bill Mills, the mayor of Churro, is, is just-
They're having a heck of a time.
...one mayor that has spoken, you know, very loudly about this issue, so it is at the provincial level already. Um, I believe it was on the UNSM list of resolutions, but it didn't, I don't think it made like the top, we were only sending in, remember, we decided we're just gonna send seven or so in?
Yes.
However, um, there were those that needed action and they were going to be passed along as well. So, from us, I mean, you can make a motion for staff to look into it and then, Jeff, maybe the first thing you can do is ask me to check with UNSM because we'll know exactly where that, where that is.
All right.
Is that okay?
That's perfectly fine.
Because I'm pretty sure, it's at a pretty high level, just may need a-
Couple of pushes?
A hoof in the right place.
Okay.
Okay? All right? So, you want to make motion to direct staff to see where this issue?
Yes, I would, yeah, if I could make that motion officially, please.
Certainly. Second by councillor Barry. Any further discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you, your worship.
Well, you're most welcome. So, the Hundred Meals and, and I've, I've just had, I have to say this week, I had more people say, what is it than, than not? So, I'm just gonna give a, a brief, um, overview and I'll just tell you how it started and where we are right now. So, basically, first things first, I was just reading the Vanguard, as I do, go through it from cover to cover. And, and in the community section, you'll always find, you know, where different organizations are holding meals. So, the Knights of Columbus has always done, I believe they've always done, for years, they've done their soup kitchen on Tuesdays. I know Temple Baptist Church every second, um, Thursday does a meal, those, those types of things. And, and that particular week, I was getting, you know, two or three calls a day from people and, and, and I'll say this, that when, when winter hits, um, you go into a different mode. And so, people were saying things like to me, I have to choose between heat and food or I can't buy my medication this month because I, I don't have enough money to cover everything. And, um, I mean, there's seven of us here that know what it's like to, to have to hear that and, and, um, feel kind of helpless. So, so basically, I just called the, the mayor's task team together and I asked, is it feasible? I knew, I knew the answer would be yes. Was it one of our councils used to say, don't ask the question unless you know the answer? And, um, yeah, I said, can we do a hundred meals in a row for the coldest days of winter? They said yes and the entire team stepped up, including NSCC students who, who did, um, healthy meal plans and things like that. So, everybody stepped up. So, basically, what we have right now is a calendar. You can go to the town website, you can go to, uh, Facebook, uh, it's called One Hundred Meals. Um, so, it's available in a lot of spots. It's also available in seniors' homes. Cheryl Grant has, um, gracefully looked after that, making sure that it's in all the seniors' homes. So, basically, every day, there is one full meal provided, um, to the community. It's free of charge. It's not, people will say, well, I don't really need it. It's not about, it's not about need, it's about covering the needs first and foremost, but it's also about making sure that the people who would never, um, ask for anything that are in need, that they feel comfortable in that environment because, you know, I'm at some of those meals, Wade's at some of those, Phil shows up, you know, we all, we all go to those. There's everything from teachers to doctors to, you know, everybody in between. So, it's absolutely a community meal. I have watched people make friendships. I, I said earlier, you know, the kids are, they bring their entire families and the kids are dancing to the live music after and it's just a, a really cool place to be. So, the schedule varies every week, but basically, um, every Monday and Friday, Hope Center has a, has a brand-new center, so you can go there between eleven-thirty and one-thirty and Hope Center is putting on two meals a week, every Monday and Friday. The Knights of Columbus is always Tuesday at lunchtime. Holy Trinity Church does breakfast every Wednesday morning and I understand it's a breakfast second to none, full meal deal. It's wild. The Temple Baptist and Yarmouth Wesleyan are sharing Thursdays. Uh, Saturday morning, Sandra Finney and her team are doing, at the Knights of Columbus, a breakfast from nine till ten. And I hear every week, there's some kind of a, either pancakes, actually, there's pancakes and eggs every week, toast, fruit, juice, coffee, tea, um, and, um, sausage, bacon, whatever they have. Fried baloney, they had fried baloney one week. I'll tell you, that ups the ante. That's my favorite. So, and Sunday nights, uh, you know, one, one night a month, Beacon Church does it. Um, we just pulled a team together last week and, and I, I can't believe I made spaghetti for a hundred and forty, but there it is. Uh, and the Lions Club, I believe the last Sunday of the month, council's going to be making a meal, so come on out. Dawn's gonna cook.
Especially with fried baloney though.
Exactly, fried baloney, that's right. And, uh, and the YMCA has stepped up as well. So, I gue- I guess I just wanted to make everybody aware that this is for absolutely everybody in the community, you know, bring your family out and, uh, it's something we can all enjoy together. And I do want to say thank you, oh, I have to say this. It takes funds to do any of this and within two weeks, and we get checks every single day, within two weeks, we had twelve thousand dollars from the community to put this on. And I couldn't even, um, you know, when they showed me the list, I couldn't even talk. I said, I can't believe, twelve thousand dollars from the community. So, so individuals, organizations, and businesses are sponsoring this, you know, just, just as quickly as, as they can and also stepping up to, uh, to donate their time. So, thank you to everybody involved and we hope we see you out to some of these meals. Okay? And I had added inferior housing, but we already covered that, so, that's good. Any more additions? We're good on that, folks? Approval of invoices.
So, move.
Moved and seconded? Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. The date of the next meeting is February eighth and, do we have any in camera?
Could you have that?
Okay, so I am looking for a motion to move camera. Thank you.[1790.62]